I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Marine City Commission to order on April 2nd at 7:00 PM. Commissioner Lovett is going to lead us in the opening prayer and then immediately after that, we're going to pledge allegiance.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Lord Jesus, we come to you this evening as the Christian community celebrates your Last Supper, asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this commission meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful and positive discussion. Allow us to nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the residents of the city of Marine City. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and service to our community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Sotaric?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Present.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Present.
Commissioner Melvin?
Here.
Commissioner Simpson?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
And Commissioner Nortillery?
Here.
Bring this to item four, which is communications. We got four A's. Certificate of completion, I guess, from our city clerk. Backs her. Congratulations on that.
One more year ago.
We've got multiple letters, B through H, about a fence issue surrounding 2025 South Parker Street.
Make a motion to stop the communications, place them on file.
Support. Motion, support and discussion. Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes, I'd like to know if there was any chance that this could have been put on the agenda as an item for discussion instead of just open letters since everybody came. I mean, I know we might not be able to do much about the current fence. There's a couple of issues, but I think we need to discuss at least our ordinance to see if there is any improvements we can make in that ordinance for any future issues.
You can make a motion to add it to the agenda.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to add it to new business to look at the fence, our fence ordinance. It'd be B.
We have motion, support and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So now that will become item 7B. Nope, nope, sorry, 10B. New business.
So it's essentially a discussion of both sides?
Yeah, there's lots of, no action we could take, so. All right, move on to public comment. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
My name is William Sweet. I live at 6573 South River Road, across from the district court. I want to point out that several years ago, and I did bring this up to our city manager, several years ago, I talked to the head of the waterways division of the DNR, and I was informed that you cannot, there's a right-of-way along the river, you cannot prevent people from crossing your property and following the river. A fence impedes that. He also told me that under the terms of the treaty that ended the war with Britain, property owners on the St. Clair River have unusual riparian rights. They own to the center of the river, the international boundary, the property under the water. For what that's worth, I think the city attorney ought to contact the DNR waterways division and confirm that you can't put up a fence to impede people from crossing that property because it interferes with the right-of-way. And that right-of-way has existed long before a property was, had ownership there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. My name's Jeff Snyder. I live at 1987 South Parker, approximately two houses north of 2025 South Parker. Lived here 25 years. Fences have basically been a no-no in the area. Last fall, in fact, I had new neighbors buy the house next door, and they're very close. I considered putting a piece of privacy fence between my house and the house to the north. When I saw Mr. Bailey at the building department, he was very touchy. He says, well, it's a touchy issue. It's very close. And that's, and then he said, he said one thing, he says, you're not considering putting a fence down to the water beyond your house, are you? That's a real touchy issue and may get into requiring to notify your neighbors and everything else. This was just last fall. I decided when I found out that my property was approximately four feet from my neighbor's house, I was not going to put up a piece of privacy fence and create warfare. But I never had an intention, but he had told me that running a fence down to the water was going to be an inclusive process just last fall. And now, all of a sudden, a fence permit got issued very quickly and everything else. As far as I'm concerned about property values, I, when I looked at houses before, one of the things was a turnoff was immediately fence-down yards interfering with the view and everything. It's going to damage my property values, a high concern I have. But the other thing is, is also, there's one concern I hope the city attorney can go look up. I'm going to be in contact with the DNR also. I happened last year to be involved in getting flood height measurements for insurance reasons on my house and came across all sorts of things about structures. And there are structural requirements and that, they talk about fences. Fences regress water when it floods, the flow of water. My deck is a concern on my house. It's attached to my house. That's why I have to pay flood insurance right now. If I disconnect my deck from my house, I'm probably going to be able to reapply. But a fence, there's all sorts of stuff on the internet talking about fences and designs that they have to release in case of a flood, that the water can go down, that the fence will break free and let down. So there are all sorts of issues. I don't think our ordinance is anywhere up to speed with federal law. So we're granting permits and rights to people that, you know, we just haven't kept up with the times. We're a small town. Yeah, but my property values and, you know, the aesthetics and the property values are just, you know, I can't afford, you know, I don't want to take a hit on this. I pay good taxes down there. We pay for the boat well, whether you use it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Uh, there's someone else coming up. Nope.
Good evening. My name is Joe McCarthy. I'm here with my wife, Madeline. We're residents at 2041 South Parker Street. We purchased that property 10 years ago. We moved in. Like many of our property, neighbors of our property, we've painted our houses, we've cleaned up the landscaping, we took out dead trees and bushes and what have you, all because we want to enjoy our community, enjoy our property, enjoy our waterfront view. A year ago, a new neighbor moved in two doors north of mine and began to fix up a property that was in disrepair. We were thrilled to see that. Then they, all of a sudden, moved, left town, and then they've come back. And when they've come back, they had the house for sale apparently, or lease, unable to sell it or lease it. Now they've moved back in. And apparently, they have some kind of a guard dog or something that they want to keep there. And their solution to having this dog is not to have an invisible fence or to repair their fence that's in their property between their home and the yard, but to turn the entire property into a dog run. It makes no sense. What also doesn't make sense to me is that, that we became aware of this permit a week or so ago, and we've had some communication. My wife has brought letters to the, to the office there, and we were told to have letters there before 10 o'clock on Monday, which we did. And many of our neighbors did the same. And my neighbor immediately to my north, Mr. Malika, had actual conversations with the building person and with the city manager. I was concerned with some of the comments when this, and said that you folks here have no authority to tell him what to do with respect to a fence permit. I understand that the city manager was in communication with Mr. Malika and indicated that nothing was going to happen until tonight, when this matter would be brought before you, where the community would have an opportunity to address the citizens of our community that had been elected to lead our community. Now, my wife, you may not know us, but before we moved to your community, we were, she was a township supervisor for many years. I was a chairman of the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals of a large township in our county. We dealt with these various issues as that community grew. Proper planning is important in maintaining the community values and the property values. You and your role have taken on a leadership role in addressing the needs of this community to improve the community for the benefit of all of us. The improvements in downtown, the improvements along the river, the improvements in our, in our neighborhoods, that's something that this community should be striving for. And part and parcel of that is the proper leadership and the proper zoning, the proper zoning enforcement that goes along with a progressive community. Now, you can choose to be a small backward community and just ignore the zoning ordinances that you have, not maintain them, not update them, not review them periodically. But if you want to be a progressive community, if you want to improve the entire community, then that requires proper leadership, zoning, planning. And I'm a career prosecutor. I've been in courtrooms almost every day of my working life for the last 35 years. I'm in court today, and I'm getting a phone call from my wife and who has been alerted by Mrs. Malika that there is a fence being put up now. And I said, well, call the police. We were informed that nothing would happen until after tonight, so that you people would have an opportunity to review this problem and perhaps provide some leadership to the people that you have hired to minister the day-to-day operations of this community. And the return call, and I'm stepping out of court to take these phone calls, and, and she says, well, they decided to issue the permit, and so they're building the fence. To me, that's just a complete disregard and disrespect for your fellow citizens in this community. And there's no reason that that permit, especially when we're informed that we're going to wait and, you know, get your letters in, come to the meeting, address the board, and we'll look at this problem. And then, all of a sudden, it's gone. Now, I could have, I suppose, last week, gone to circuit court and filed for an injunction to prevent this community, this city, from issuing a permit, but I didn't think that was necessary. I really don't think that I should need to go to court to sue the city that's going to use my tax dollars. I mean, I don't want to fund both sides of a lawsuit. It's just insane. And the, when the permit was told, when the person was under review, may I use my wife's five minutes? I just want to wrap up here, if you don't mind.
You know, we're going to have, this is on the agenda. You can have, have an opportunity to speak again on the agenda, but the five-minute rule, if your wife would like to come up and speak, she's welcome to, but no, you can't have her five minutes.
I can't speak for her?
No.
All right.
But he can speak at the.
Yeah, we, we, put it on the agenda. You'll have, you'll have more opportunities.
You can come back up.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
There's, there's a reason we're being a little stricter on the five minutes because it's been getting abused a little bit, so.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Yep. Anybody else? Like to come to the podium, sir?
I have put this document together. I only made six copies. This is for a commission. Maybe a couple of you guys can share. Save me having to think without the written letter. It saves a lot of time.
My name is Daniel Iszarowski. Shereen and I live at 6557 River Road, just right across from the courthouse. This is about the fence issue. If you refer to your document there, I did this research Sunday and Monday after I understood. I'll just read it. It's my understanding that, and I'm very hard of hearing, so if I may talk too loud, is my understanding that the resident at the above address has requested a permit from the city's building department to construct a fence on their riverfront yard, known as the front yard, and that the building department is preparing to issue this permit. In fact, I want to advise you that the construction, I wrote that in hand, began today. However, this appears to be in violation of a zoning ordinance, and I will continue to read. After doing the considerable research on this issue, I would like to submit the following information pertaining to fences. In the Marine City Code of Ordinances, number 07-05, effective November 15, 2007, and recently passed at 21815 this year, there is language in various chapters, of which section titled 15, Land Usage, discusses the construction of fences, specifically Chapter 15603 Height and Material Restrictions. Also included in this section is Chapter 160 Zoning. Chapter 16003, the short titles shall be known and may be cited as the City of Marine City zoning ordinance. In Chapter 160.196, Notes to Schedule, addresses lots bordering on a lake, river, or canal, whereby the shoreline may be considered the front of such lots. In Chapter 160.226, Waterfront Lots, all lots and parcels which border on a lake, river, or canal shall be considered as waterfront lots. In Chapter 160.254, Fences and Walls, fences and walls may occupy a required rear or side yard. There is no language or reference here or in any other chapter in the zoning ordinance pertaining to fences and walls for front yards. Therefore, there appears to be a conflict of interest between the zoning ordinance and Chapter 156, Fences. Both of these chapters may be found in the Land Usage section of the Code of Ordinances. It appears to me that the original and present intent of the zoning ordinance chapter was to prevent fence or wall construction installation on front yards, regardless of whether they may front a road or waterway. I have been a resident of Marine City since November 1976, located at 6557 River Road, which, by the way, is also known as South Parker, M29, South Riverside Drive, and have been a past member of the planning commission. I am opposed to the installation of any fence on front yards, especially those yards bordering a lake, river, or canal. The installation of fences on waterfront yards detracts from the beauty and friendly waterfront atmosphere that so many of us have enjoyed over the years. In addition, fences in general create undue concern to adjacent neighbors who must now live with the additional expense and work associated with maintaining the grass along the fence line. Furthermore, fences prevent airborne debris from blowing across one's yard, and the result is trash and debris accumulating on the outside of the fence on the neighbor's side, not on the side of the people who own the fence. Fences prevent neighbors from easily visiting other neighbors. It also creates more work for the meter readers and, for the most part, decreases the overall appearance of the neighborhood, devaluating the property values, thus decreasing the city's tax base. I am therefore asking the Marine City Council to recommend to the building department to reconsider the issuance of the fence permit until the City of Marine City addresses the current fence ordinance clarifying fence construction installation on front yard, specifically waterfront yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to just commission, sir?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Council, my name's Dwayne Malika. I'm here to speak for my wife, Mary Ann Malika, and I'm here to address the fence issue. We are the resident adjacent to the property owner that the city has issued a permit to. We're south of the resident, and we're extremely upset. We believe that the city has set a precedence in that our property values are going to depreciate. If, if somebody would just take the time to walk out there tomorrow and look at what, what's being constructed, you might appreciate where we're coming from. And, you know, with that, again, I personally sent a letter in to the city and asked that the city not issue the permit until the community had a chance to speak to the mayor and to council. And they indicated that they would submit our opposition to city, city council, legal council, and ask for an opinion, and that they assured me they would get back to me personally, the city manager and the building department, before they issued the permit. Today was my last day of work. I retired today. At a retirement party, I get a call from my wife saying, Dwayne, the fence is going up. Okay, thanks, Mary Ann, I get it. I don't like it, but it is what it is. I'm asking the city to, to get out there and look at this. This resident has put up cedar trees in their front yard, the river yard, at a solid barrier that's totally against the fence ordinance. And the city has, to date, from what I understand, not, not addressed the issue. They have a solid barrier fence up there right now by trees, plus they're putting up a fence. And again, all we're asking for is the city to stop this work tomorrow and relook at this. I understand what the ordinance says, but again, my wife and I are in the position that our property values are going to depreciate, and we're going to ask, we're going to come to the zoning board, and we're going to ask for relief. And all that's going to do is, is affect the city's tax base and your ability to support us with the operation of the city. Again, I think the city has been very irresponsible over the last week. It's unacceptable. Like Mr. McCarthy said, we want to be a first-class city. We're up right now, this shows me, we're a bottom-shelf city. We're an international city. People look at us. We're on the international waterway, and now you folks are allowing a resident to put up a fence to contain a dog. Eighty percent of their yard right now is fenced on the roadside. All they have to do is complete the other 20%. They've got a, a twice, twice the size of a dog run. But no, I think it's, it's, to them, I don't know what, what it's all about, but I'm offended by it. I'm offended that the city won't step in here and say, timeout. There's something wrong here. You need to hear us out and give us the respect to look at this. We're property owners. We're probably the, on the, the higher scale of the tax base in this city with residents. Again, I'm asking, stop the work, please. Thank you.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you hold it till, when it's on the agenda? We don't really want to start the conversation.
All right, that's fine. I'll wait at this point. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Do we have anyone?
When will the discussion occur?
It's item 10B, which will be coming up pretty quick.
Okay.
Yep. Do we have anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion, support and any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda's been approved. Need to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I need to approve the city commission regular minutes from the regular meeting, March 19, 2015, as presented.
Support.
Motion, support. Do we have any comments or discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Minutes have been approved. On to item 8A, which is Consent Agenda Special Event, American Legion Poppy Sale. It's been resubmitted. Any motion to approve the consent agenda?
I need to approve the resubmission, the American Legion's poppy sale, and I again appreciate their coming to our previous meeting to discuss the issue.
Support.
By their reply.
We have a motion of support. Is there any other discussion on the poppy sale? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Poppy sale has been approved. To unfinished business, we have item 9A, which is the 2015 Maritime Days.
Good evening. Melissa Blanchard with Marine City Maritime Days. I asked to be on the agenda tonight because I met with the city manager two weeks ago, I think it was, and we discussed with the police department and the DPW department our current event fee that we're anticipating. I think I may have jumped the gun a little bit. We haven't gotten all of our estimates back, but I didn't know that two weeks ago when I had to get on the agenda. So we do have a, an estimate from the police department, and I think we have a verbal estimate from the DPW. So I just want to start by saying that, you know, I came to you guys with a preliminary event application in which you approved, and at that time, we discussed the possibility of co-sponsoring Maritime Days. Right now, I have approximately, I'm anticipating less than $4,000 in city event fees this year. While that doesn't sound like a lot, our entire proposed general working budget for Maritime Days is only, is less than $17,000. So that's about over 20, 20% of our budget. So I just want you to keep that in mind, so hopefully, when I come back in another two weeks, we can discuss our real numbers and just kind of where that puts us financially. But since I'm up here, I might as well take advantage of the time and just talk about Maritime Days a little bit and some of the things that we have going on. And also, our sponsorship and our advertising platform that we're using for this year. I'm not sure if you've noticed, but we have these awesome decals that some of our businesses are already displaying in their windows for our sponsors. Oh, show the camera, sorry. Those sponsorships start out at $20 for a family and $150 for small businesses. With those, all of our sponsors, all of our sponsors get these window decals. They get recognized on our website, our Facebook, and.
Assigned downtown.
And Assigned Downtown. Thank you. During the festival, Two Signs Downtown during the festival. I have it right in front of me. Then we go up to our silver sponsors at $250. They also get a free parade entry, which, by the way, is the best cheap advertising that a business can do in this town. So please make sure you put together a float or decorate a truck or just get a couple of people together and come out and have a good time with your employees and your family. That would be Sunday, August the 2nd. And then we have our $1,000 gold sponsorship, and that would put your business name on the back of our T-shirts, and also gets a free vendor's booth. And our platinum sponsors and up are $2,500, and that gets your, your business logo on the back of your T-shirts, plus a larger vendor space. So I do have some sponsor forums, if anybody is interested in picking one up today. It's a great way to keep things going. We did put, started a GoFundMe account online, and we've gotten a little bit of feedback to try and help with our entertainment costs. I just want to let you know that we run two stages for three days, and we have a total budget of $5,000 for those two stages for three days. I think that that's absolutely unheard of for most festivals. We're completely on the low end. A lot of our entertainment is at a reduced rate or free. They play for free for us. So just to let you know that we are, we're using our money very wisely. We are being very frugal. We borrow picnic tables instead of by, instead of rent tables and chairs. We've eliminated the cost of a tent because we've looked at the cost value analysis there, and it's just not worth it for us to take that risk on that. But moving into the fun side of things, some of the things that you can anticipate seeing from Maritime Days, we are planning on closing all water street from Bridge Street up to Pearl Street, and we're going to fill the streets with, starting Friday night with fireworks. We'll end it with a parade. In between, we'll have a 5K run, arts and crafts, food vendors. Our first-ever soapbox derby racing Friday night will be for adults, 17 and up, and on Saturday, will be for children from 6 to 16. Oh, and there's no cost for the children's race. So we, we picked up a sponsor, Barbie Ranch. So if you have children or you're a big kid yourself, build a car and come on out and have a good time. That's our. That's our first-ever Ribs on the River BBQ competition that's going to be happening in Nautical Park on Saturday. So it's going to smell fantastic down there all day. We are going to have some small children's rides. It is not a carnival. I repeat, it is not a carnival. I don't want anybody to leave here tonight saying we're going to have a carnival for Maritime Days because we were not able to secure one. But we do have some small children's rides. And eight-dollar pre-sale wristbands, it's a great price for children eight and ten and under. So it's a great area, small, our kids. But we've also have our motorcycle shows coming back, the Classic Car Show, antique tractors. This year, we'll have some antique fire trucks doing a muster out by the water. I believe we'll have some mega trucks on display for the kids to walk around and see. This year, we're going to introduce a children's parade. It's a walk, a small walking parade. You decorate your bike, your wagon, yourself, and they'll start at the beach and go to the festival stage right before the crowning of the queen. Relevant Church is putting on the children's parade, and also a teddy bear picnic. So children are encouraged to bring down a packed lunch and a teddy bear on Saturday and just sit with a group of kids, and I think they may have some fun activities for them to do while they enjoy lunch on the river. Sidewalk chalk art contest put on by GT Graphics, kids fishing contest. Great Lakes Burn Camp will be in with their fire truck dunk tank, and all the proceeds for that will go to help children go to the burn camp that have been affected by a fire. So sand art contest and horse-drawn wagon rides. It'll be like a fancy taxi around town. There'll be five different depots in which you can get on and ride through and maybe save yourself some walking by the end of the day, too. The graffiti wall, and of course, the beer garden and live entertainment, and some more stuff to come. Did I forget anything?
We do have, I have a drawing of the entire town, and we have basically everything laid out from one end to the other as to what different events are going to be held in different parks and stuff like that that we can display after the meeting or anything, if anybody's curious about the different things that we're going to be having set up throughout the twenty-six-hundred feet of road that we have, that we're closing off. And at this point in time, with everything that we have planned, it looks like we are going to fill the streets from one end of the town to the other, and then all the parks are going to be pretty full with the different events that we have planned. I can't emphasize enough, I know that I've seen some pushback on the GoFundMe that we ended up putting up on the internet, but we have had a lot of people that have contacted us personally. They didn't want to donate through GoFundMe because they didn't want the money to go to GoFundMe because eight percent goes to GoFundMe. So they made donations to us directly to help us out. So just because that GoFundMe page doesn't look like it's done much for us, it has really opened up a lot of people's eyes as to the things that we have going on and the full venue of entertainment that we have planned for the entire family for the weekend. It's not, it's definitely going to be an event that is going to keep a lot of people entertained.
Yeah, just with that, too, some of the things that we're still trying to raise money for, a major emphasis this year and really every year moving forward is just, it's a family-friendly event. This is for every person in our community to come down and benefit from, from whatever age, whatever their background, whatever their interests. We're trying to provide something for everybody, and that's kind of difficult to do, but we're getting there. We're really in, on the right direction to that. Our teens are very hard to appease. It's hard to figure out what they want. Half the time, they don't know what they want. But there's a few things out there that, you know, we're looking into. I found a BMX stunt bicyclist. He's a motivational speaker. He goes to schools and events like this and talks about staying away from drugs and safety, the helmets, the protective gear, just no bullying, just all the positive things that, you know, we need our youth to understand, and showing them that they can, they can do cool things, they can do fun things, they can be cool, but not going down the wrong track. That person is thirty-six-hundred dollars. So you didn't hear, he's not on our list. We are not bringing him in unless we can get funded for it. If anybody's interested, specifically in something like that, please let us know. Whatever your donation is, you can direct it to, "Hey, I want that to go for fireworks." Or, "I want that to go to that stunt guy you talked about." We've talked to a water ski show, a water ski team. They, they want to come out. It's about two thousand dollars to get them to come out and do two different shows. And they'll do barefoot skiing right in front, you know, on our water, putting Maritime Days, Maritime back into Maritime Days. But all of that stuff costs money. So we're trying to build, we're trying to create new things, but, you know, we just need the support if people want to see those things happen. Yeah, so if, does anybody have any questions?
First of all, I know, I can't speak for everyone, but I'm sure that we all do appreciate the fact that you've taken this back over. Did a marvelous job two years ago, and, you know, it's exciting to see your excitement and all of your plans, but do have a couple of questions, and I'm not trying to be negative about this. But the last time, you make quite a bit of money, and it went to a lot of, good causes, I'm not saying that were bad causes. But I would hope that you would plan to keep doing this and put that money aside so that you can build up and hire these things, and that you can, you know, the city is in desperate straits right now. I mean, the DPW is, you know, minimum, and it costs money to use them and to do things, and perhaps, you know, give the city back some of what they put into it, too, where you can't, you know, not saying that we have to. And then, thirdly, looking at, you know, the Bridge Street, that's the only access to Holy Cross, basically, and it's pretty cut off a few times here. I know the school's doing, the parents there are doing some children's activities. Is that what you said?
Right now, I believe the Holy Cross PTO is working on trying to put together a rubber ducky race.
Okay. You have a race going by there, cutting off that road, and then you have, at eleven o'clock, you have a staging area. Now, there's church on Sunday morning, and that really fills up, and they're maybe out of there, depending on which pastor, excuse me, pastors, but, you know, some go a little later. So at nine-thirty, ten-thirty, you're looking, you're getting pretty close in there to not having them be able to get out, so...
For what on Sunday? I'm not sure.
Mass services.
I know, but what do we have on Sunday?
You have the staging, did I read it wrong? It says, I thought it was staging for the parade at eleven...
No, that's going to be on Scott, Carroll, and Bruce Street.
Okay, so I read Route Bell River Road over Bridge. You're just mentioning the route here. I thought you meant you were staging it there. Okay. That was my misunderstanding, then.
No, I don't believe there should be any interference with mass. There'll be a five K on Saturday morning, and I do believe that they might loop around the church, but that's, that's a moving thing, and that's eight o'clock in the morning. So on Saturday. And there's nothing on Sunday. The car show is in that area, but we don't go all the way past through Bridge Street, so there shouldn't be an issue there.
Right, no, that town, I misread the staging. I thought that it meant you were going to come all the way down there and go, "Uh-oh."
No, no.
They're all welcome to come up into our festival and enjoy the parade.
Oh, of course.
If they stay, that's a good thing for everybody.
Block them in, you'll have a ready audience, right?
I do want to address your initial concern, too. Two years ago, we did have a little bit of money that we were looking at and needing to know that, needed, we knew that we needed to give back, and that's one of the things that we've talked about, what do we want to see going forward? For me, really, at this point in time, I think that I want to get us to a self-sustaining situation. So two, we donated money to two different organizations two years ago. The one was, we made picnic tables to replenish some of the picnic tables that we've used over the years with the Marine City Lions Club. They've been phenomenal with letting us use their picnic tables. When they get moved, picked up and moved and back and forth, they do get damaged, and even just around, around, in their own facilities, that happens. So we just wanted to give back to them, and I believe we have maybe less than four hundred dollars in supplies. There's no possible way we could even consider renting tables and chairs for that amount of money. So and that was the first time we ever, you know, gave back to them in that capacity of trying to. It was kind of, it was kind of beneficial for both of us, really. We did give a sizable amount of money to the Bow River PTO. At that point in time, they were going through a bit of financial problems, and we looked at that as it was an investment for ourselves and for the community, and giving back to the people who kind of gave us that money a little bit, because it was, the money that we gave them was what we made from the carnival company that year. So all that money was raised from the kids in the community who went out and bought wristbands and rode the rides and stuff like that. I will say, that was a learning experience for us, because we have contacted and reached out to Bow River PTO this year and asked them, "Hey, we don't have a carnival company this year. We don't have games." And I've gone to all of the PTOs. I've gone to the churches and the organizations and everybody and said, "I know that you have winter carnival games laying around in your back roof. I know that you do this for yourself. I know that you need to raise money for yourself. Please come on out and raise money for yourself and set these up. It will create, you know, an activity, an event for the community, for Maritime Days, and it'll help you so that you don't have to send home pizza kits." And they've all said no. So it's, it's been a learning experience and a slap in the face. So we're really going to think closely before we do that again. So, any other questions?
Well, I think just to echo her comment, with, that year, we also contributed money or lowered your fees quite a bit, I think by four thousand dollars or more. So, you know, I know, I felt like we were kind of the ones making that donation. So I would say that when you're still looking to the city for support, you got to think twice about charitable donations until you become self-sufficient. But other than that, I think you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate everything you're doing, and your, and all the organization, and doing an excellent job.
Right.
To expound on that, Mr. Meriwine, Mr. Blanchard's sitting up there. I'd just like to thank him. He's a civil engineer, and he came into my office, and he was the first person that suggested the one-way street to solve our parking problem. He beat you, Mr. Meriwine, Pro Tem, by two days. And it was a revelation. Man thought of that, and he put a lot of his time into it, and the Blanchards do good work for the city.
Thank you.
I just want to point out one more thing. As Diane spoke on briefly, previous board to this one realized the problem that these city events, or these events going on, the city was picking up the tab for their services, DPW and police. And we kind of got to a point where we couldn't afford it anymore, you know? So we established, I guess we'd call them guidelines, I won't necessarily call them rules, but to classify the types of events that are going on and figure out, you know, if, like, in the case if there's alcohol served, okay, well, then that ups the need for police. If you're a political event, a private event, if you're a co-sponsored event. Now, I don't, I can't recall, last year, we considered your event co-sponsored with the city.
I don't, it wasn't sponsored at all last year. I believe it was two years ago.
Well, when I say, if you look at, I'll get you a copy of those guidelines, but if you look at the types of classifications, if it's a co-sponsored, private and city event, we'd split the cost with you.
Yeah, I don't even think we co-sponsored it.
That's why I'm not sure if we helped them out because...
Yeah, two years ago, it was co-sponsored.
That's what I thought.
Was it co-sponsored, or we just reduced your fees?
No, it was co-sponsored. The fee reduction, actually, I may be shooting myself in the foot here, but I'm going to speak about it anyway. I firmly believe, and we went back through and we re-looked at it, and I think that that's why the city event fee was actually instituted, because in years past, we have a new commission, we have actually new department heads in place. In years past, it was clearly stated that overtime was just handed out, like candy bars, because, hey, it's Maritime Days, everybody gets to cash in on this event. Well, when they passed that along, and we started seeing it, it was like, whoa, what's going on here? And so, you know, we looked at, okay, what are you charging us for? And why is that being charged to us? We didn't ask for, we didn't actually need it, and sometimes, there was things like that probably, I'm not going to say didn't happen, but it was, it was abused on both sides of that spectrum. So I, I think in saying that, you know, this year's cost estimates are less than four thousand dollars, that's really shown where we've reduced the amount of impact that we have on you and vice versa. So I think that, you know, that's, that's really helped us. I think that it was needed.
Part of the reason I bring that up is because I happen to know those guidelines because I wrote them, but you can also request a subcommittee be put together with members of the city, council, whatever it takes, to help work out those cost issues. So that, in that set of guidelines, you can do that.
Okay.
And I think that, two weeks ago, when I walked into Mr. Tillery's office, and we sat down with the DPW and the police, I mean, these guys have...
They're awesome.
...really sharpened their pencil. I mean, we're not dealing with the same people that we dealt with two years ago. I mean, it's, it's very clear. I mean, just the numbers alone, we came to you guys two years ago and said, "We need help with this because you guys gave us an estimate of like eighty-five-hundred dollars" or something like that for a three-day event. And, you know, during that time, I was running around with a camera, taking pictures of the DPW guys doing what they were doing and stuff. So we definitely sharpened our pencil on everybody. I mean, the estimate clearly states that. I mean, he's, we're roughly somewhere in the area of around thirty-five-hundred dollars. It's a whole different story than it was a couple of years ago, and we've got a bigger event planned this year than we did then. We don't have the carnival, but we really don't have space for the carnival with all the other things we have scheduled for this event. You know, it's, it's definitely going to be a big impact. And I personally, I understand where the city came up with the event fee, but I also know that all of, everybody is trying to make a fun, interactive town for people to be able to live in, and for, in essence, two weekends a year, we have two festivals. The Music Festival does an awesome job down there at the beach, and Maritime Days does a, you know, fills this town. I mean, we have advertising from Canada all the way to the metro area that we're trying to show people, you know, what our town is. So half of thirty-five-hundred dollars, I think, is a deal for everybody sitting in those chairs for what's happening.
Again, I strongly suggest that you sit down with members of DPW. I'm sure...
No, we have, and they've been, they've been wonderful.
Well, yeah, the reason I say that is because there might be more opportunities that you're not thinking of. In other words, give them a chance to justify their costs, why they're there, and maybe you can look at, "Well, gee, we didn't realize if I closed that street is going to cost the DPW more, the police more." Whatever, you know, whatever events and things that take place, there might be opportunity to reduce those costs more. And if not, at least you'll understand why you're being charged what you're being charged.
At this point right now, we've already done that. We've sat down with both of them, and we, you know, we understand the charges right now, and there's no, there's no arguments, no disputes at that, at this point in time. I mean, they've been great.
I misunderstood. I thought when we first cut up, that's what you were saying.
That was years past, and so, like I said, I understand why this event fee was instituted because the money was, I mean, it was crazy. But now, I mean, everybody's tightened their belts. The police department, they're, they're doing a fabulous job with bringing in some cadets and bringing in some protection that, you know, and, and all of that. The DPW, we've been able to work with some road closure times so that they're not into overtime, and, you know, things that we can do, you know, we'll be emptying our own garbage cans and stuff like that so that they don't have to. So, you know, we'll make sure that our grounds are swept and clean and, and things like that. So I think we're already there, and this is still where we're at, and it's, at twenty percent of our budget, that's still a lot. So moving forward, I know that there, there are plans to, you know, give back to the city of Marine City, so...
Doing an awesome job.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure the city's trying to help you, not...
No, they, they are great right now, so...
I think that, that one year you're talking about, it was like eighty-five-hundred dollars.
It was insane.
Yeah, so they're, they're less than half of what they were two years ago, so I think they're, they're working on it.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
Nope.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
All right, on to item nine B, which is the sidewalk inspection program discussion. I'm not sure what all that is in the packet.
These are...
It doesn't look like the sidewalk program.
These are what we found, uh, in Mr. Gaver's notes. Um, he has a, a packet on my desk. And we talked about the resolution last time. Um, the, the first part of this is the resolution that would be passed repealing the first, uh, the existing resolution. And going forward, the sidewalk program would become then a separate document that could easily be changed. And the next several pages are, you, you can see where it starts out as a sidewalk repair program uh, with, with forms that you would, uh, utilize to find, um, faulty sidewalks and the owners could use to, to discover if theirs was faulty. These are, the, the colored, uh, page there with the numbers on it, that is, um, I believe it's some estimates and some incurred claims so far for the years. And these are detailed claims to justify, um, the sidewalk program, updating it. The last two pages are, uh, the current DPW, uh, guidewalks for inspection of sidewalks and the, uh, city sidewalk replacement request form. Now, on my desk, there's also three books, um, published for sidewalk programs that were just too big to, to reproduce that, uh, talks about how to make a sidewalk program. Um, it appears the intent, what, the intent of this is to get this rolling and promulgate this, this, uh, separate piece that is, um, going to be used in the future and easily changed by the, uh, the board, um, to move forward the city project, or to the sidewalk project. I think from conversations past, where we're at now is, are we keeping our old sidewalk program or looking at the new sidewalk program? And if you can give me some guidance on that this time, I will either have, uh, a first draft of the new sidewalk program made up or we will dust off our old sidewalk program and decide where we go, where we need to go with that one.
Do you have this first section where it says, I didn't see that in here. It says, we have a whole-
He doesn't have that in here at all. This is, this is a collection of other random things.
I, I, this is all I could find in the office at this point.
Oh, so you don't, you don't even have that?
No, but I'd like to copy it if you can.
Yeah, I've been holding this thing for a while.
What's the date on there? What meeting was that?
Nine thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, so we can go back. It, it should be part of a packet too.
Okay.
Cause I haven't been able to, I, I probably threw my copy out when I cleaned house.
Well, this one's, nine, but this one says October.
Fourteen?
But you know, I think I went in and looked and I don't know if all this was in there. But yeah, you can have a copy of this. Because this is some of the pages in here is where I kind of got some problems with some of the language and some of the stuff in here and I kind of wanted to go through some of that too.
Well, you know, the intent back then was to, uh, rewrite the, you know, come up with a comprehensive sidewalk program and totally rewrite what we had in the existing ordinance.
Yes.
So, and, uh, I think that's where we all pretty much decided that we want to do move forward with that.
Yeah, I think that's what a lot of this, this-
Right, but we hadn't totally vetted that document and-
I could not find that document. I found every, everything else in the books you used to make that document, but I couldn't find it. Can we get together next week and?
Yeah.
Should be, if, I think you'll probably find it in that September packet of two thousand thirteen. So, I don't know. Do you want to continue this discussion or just put this off to the next meeting? Commissioner Avery?
I have one question. In the area that would be the form that the inspector would use to judge the sidewalk condition, there's something called type T. City responsible to replace. I think we really have to define exactly what does that mean and how-
Well, the ordinance pretty much states what, the existing ordinance states what we have that we're responsible to, for. And, and what the, uh, Jason, property owners are responsible for. What you're looking at is actually the existing documents, correct, that we're using now.
Yes.
These are, this is existing stuff that's part of the existing enforcement program, which is not being enforced at all.
No, but then if that's the part that was supposed to be, anyway, I think we have to be careful defining that. Uh, I saw something else before about trees, but it, it's very vague as to what responsibilities the city has.
Yeah, did you see the letter from the attorney that addressed a lot of that?
Not the tree.
No, that doesn't cover-
I think it does address the trees.
Yeah, I would agree.
I think it totally addressed the trees. Basically said it's not an issue because the homeowners are responsible for it, that. Though I think that we're responsible-
But when you have a, you have this city, uh, insurance agent here saying because the tree is the city's tree and it caused the damage, the city should be responsible for that damage.
Well, I'm just going by the, what the attorney's letters that-
All I read in there-
Did you get the same opinion that I, the same person I-
That only told me the right of way. That's all I read.
Yeah, that's all I remember noticing in there.
But it discussed about how it's still the responsibility of the homeowner.
For the right of way, for the whole sidewalk, but it doesn't discuss trees in particular. And that's the tree between the sidewalk and the curb. It doesn't say that in there. So, we still need some clarification, I think. And I think everybody needs to-
And we were actually gonna have that in executive session, but the city attorney couldn't be here tonight, so.
Yeah.
You know, he could probably add a lot to this discussion, so I would-
Yeah, to have a conversation without him present, I think, would not get us too far down the road.
Yeah.
I'd say postpone this. I'd make a motion to postpone this till the next meeting.
Yeah, it's unfinished business anyway, so we just-
And then everybody can get a copy of this too.
Right. Okay.
Was that nine thirteen of twenty fourteen, Commissioner Henry?
Well, the memo, the memo says Oc- October thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, but the document says nine thirteen, two thousand. Okay, so you have to be careful.
It was probably part of the document.
I just want to know what board packet you're referencing.
Well, I'm assuming this one, October thirteenth, two thousand.
Probably.
Look in there somewhere.
All right, so if we're all in agreement, would you like to move on to the next item?
You have a motion in our section.
We have a motion.
Yep. She motioned to table.
It was just a discussion, so I don't think we needed a motion.
We didn't have one.
Yeah, this is just a discussion.
I don't know if it was-
It's just gonna stay unfinished business.
Yeah, it's just unfinished business, so. Are, are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Yep.
On to item nine C, which is, uh, there was a motion made at the last meeting. That was, uh, postponed. Do we want to pick up on that motion again or we, I think we kind of resolved that.
We can finish voting if you'd like, I'll just remake the motion. The motion was to remove the tot lot, parking lot, uh, issue from the, um, next budget.
Right, and I believe I, I seconded that.
Yes, you did.
But that wasn't in the minutes. And then, uh, Commissioner Simpson objected to voting on it at that time because we hadn't had time to really think about it, so.
Or even talk about it.
Or even talk about it. And then, since then, we've had multiple discussions at our budget workshops, so we've talked about this many times. So, would you like to just go ahead and move forward with the vote?
Can you repeat the motion again, Lisa?
The motion was to remove the tot lot, parking lot issue from the budget.
The two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget.
Yes. Yeah, it's a tot lot parking issue.
Which we all pretty much ripped it out of the budget at the last meeting, so.
It will not be in there.
I didn't rip mine out either, to tell you the truth. Is that it? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Has been removed from the budget discussion. Moving on to item nine D, which is, uh, former city manager payout. Is this gonna be discussed in executive session or?
No, no, this, this portion of it here is, uh, our auditor and our finance director advised, no matter what happens with the executive session portion of this, the item still needs to be approved by the commission. Regardless of, of the outcome of the other, we still have to approve the, the initial expenditure.
Cause it was never approved.
It was never approved.
Yeah.
But it was paid.
It was paid, but that's why it has to be-
On that particular item, it was never, uh-
So, it's already been paid. What if we don't go along with the approving it? I, I guess I'll have to contact the city attorney on that one. I, I don't know, sir. Um, are, are-
Well, we already know what the issue is.
We're approving something after the fact?
Yeah.
Yeah, we already paid it. But there's a lot of things we approve after the fact that's in, in the, uh, financial portion and expenditures.
This is housekeeping. It was simply never approved but paid.
It, yeah, officially it was never paid and we've already had communications and agreement to, uh, return the amount that was in excess. As long as we, uh, assure him that we'll do the proper things as far as the tax liability, which just probably means we're gonna have to issue him a new W two, a correct W two. So, it's just housekeeping. I guess we'll put it to another vote and, uh, see what happens.
Does anyone make a motion to approve the payout for the former city manager?
Support.
I, I just want to make a comment that you're making about the tax issue about it, but he got the payout in January. That means that's for the next fiscal year, not for the taxes of this year. So, I don't understand why you're saying that he has to make another W two.
Cause they've already issued one, cause he left. They've already done that.
There'll be standard procedure-
Physical paper mails out later, but that account basically is closed and the tax paperwork gone in.
But you, you're not talking about anything expensive or major system.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I, I guess I didn't, you know, I, I figured if I get paid in January, that's the next year.
On his W two right now, if he reimburses us, then he wants that adjustment on his W two.
Yeah, he doesn't want to pay taxes on what he paid back to us.
Okay, all right.
Anything else? Commissioner Simpson?
Do we have a total dollar amount on the adjusted, just so we can be clear on what we're voting for?
Total dollar amount adjusted is, um,
It was under six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
What the, what the original figure was.
No, but we're voting on the payout.
The payout is the full amount.
Yeah, we need the full amount.
Not adjusted, it's a full amount.
But if we're voting on that, to have, we should have a total dollar amount we're voting on, which would initiate a roll call vote for our procedures. I just want to make sure that we have that. If it's just a housekeeping issue, we should have those numbers and make sure it's kept appropriately in our house.
We can move to next agenda and I'll get those numbers from the finance director.
I would feel more comfortable with that. I realize it's just that, but I mean, we've already had one little issue with that. We want to make sure it takes care of it once and for all.
Well, we do have a motion, so we need a motion to postpone, postpone.
I'd make a motion to postpone, uh, that vote until we can get a final dollar amount, um, at our next regular meeting.
Support. So, a motion, support and discussion on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to item nine E, which is the fire authority discussion. Again, this was something I requested, uh, after talking to the city treasurer, but this isn't exactly what I requested. This is a copy of the original resolution that we passed, uh, was it last year? What's the date on this?
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen.
Probably December.
Two thousand thirteen, December.
And the, the issue I had with this, uh, after talking with the treasurer is we basically did this resolution to give the, uh, fire authority any excess payments in perpetuity. Which, um, in hindsight, I don't think was the smartest thing to do. We should at least give this commission the ability to look at that on a yearly basis. Look at the amount of the overpayment and then make a decision based on that. So, the resolution I asked for would have been a resolution to, uh, replace this one and put language in there that says the, that the board has the ability to review that annually.
The, the board would have to request that resolution, not you.
Uh, well, they'd have to approve it.
You'd have, this board would have to request that resolution to be written.
Well, there is no resolution.
I understand that. That's what I'm trying to say. If you want one, you can't just request it. This board has to request it.
Any member of this board can make that motion.
Yes, I'm saying you can make the motion.
We've actually had members create resolutions and bring it to the board. But, um, I'll make the motion that we have a resolution drafted that, uh, would give this commission the authority to review this on an annual base, this is the overpayment on an annual basis.
A second.
So, a motion to support and discussion. Mr. Hendrick?
Um, I'd like to, would, would you like Jennifer's here tonight if you'd like to ask her any questions about anything?
Cause this doesn't have anything to do with anything in particular other than allowing this commission to have the discretion to make a decision.
Well, that's true. I just thought maybe if you had some questions-
No, I don't have any particular concerns about the amount that was overpaid this year or next year. I'm just, as far as I'm concerned, it's just, was inappropriate for this resolution to be made in perpetuity the way it was. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, so the intent here is to give us an option.
Give us an option. Not to, not to actually do anything, just give us an option.
Okay, I agree.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I'd agree as well. It's a, I don't think I would ever consider, you know, not wanting to be funding future purchases. I think that's very, very important, especially for items like trucks that are several hundred thousand dollars that need to be certified to be used. Um, but I, I completely agree to have a resolution that, you know, um, has something for perpetuity, that's, that's not appropriate. And it just gives us a tool to address that. It's not, not that we will, but it gives us that option should we have a severe overage one year or, um, so to have that tool, philosophically, I, I appreciate, you know, the, the fact that they're putting money away, but to have this tool, I think, is important.
I, I guess, Maureen, cause if, if you want to do that and you want to, can, would you like her here to take, to tell you what's there? Because there has to be adjustments based on the fact that they purchased the truck. So, if you want to know the actual fact-
No, because this isn't actually going to take anything away. All this does is give us the ability to even discuss it.
I just thought maybe you want to know-
Because we don't have, at this point, we don't even have the ability to scrutinize it.
Okay.
And, and the first year, I think, I think it was like sixty-five thousand dollars.
That was an accumulation of three years.
The, the next year it was thirty-some thousand dollars. Our total contribution to their, to their capital fund from the overpayments so far is, uh, over a hundred and one thousand dollars. So, you know, if there's a year where there's no incidents in Marine City and we really overpay and it's a two-hundred thousand dollar, do we want to just give that to them? Well, we, I think we should have the ability to analyze it.
Okay. I just didn't know if you wanted her to bring some figures.
No, cause we're not talking about anything in specific other than to give us the ability to do our jobs.
Okay, that's fine.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we need a resolution drafted. If you need help with the language, I, you're, I'd consult with the attorney. All right, so now we're on to new business. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I would recommend that if we could move item B up to the first part of this for consideration of everyone sitting here.
I would support that.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so item ten B is the fence. And I guess we've, we've heard from a lot of people on the fence issue. And just to lay the ground rules here, I also live, you know, on the river. I believe I'm the only board member that does here. And I understand your concern, trust me. If I had that going on on my little stretch of, of the river there, I'd be equally concerned. Our acting city manager, uh, would you like to explain why we have done what we have done to date? I believe you told me that we're just bound by the law at this point?
Yes. The building inspector has ten days to issue a permit once the application is sent into the office. The minute he lays that application on the desk, whatever law is in place at that moment is what you have to use to determine if that application for permit will ultimately be successful. Um, I talked to Mr. Sweet and he said he had talked to someone from the DNR that believed, he believed there was a DNR issue. I called the DNR. Um, for a week, we've been trying to do due diligence on this. I called the DNR and talked to their, um, I believe it was an attorney. Um, it was part of their enforcement arm and he advised me that there is, to his knowledge, no law that re, that prohibits a fence along the river. There's some language that talks about these things for the Great Lakes, but not a river. I, I, um, called the Coast Guard. I called the United States Attorney's Office. Mr. Sweet thought there was some, um, um, federal issues as well. I could not find anybody that could tell me there was any issues legally for that fence. So, then I asked for our city attorney to provide an opinion. Now, keep in mind, every day the clock is ticking for the building inspector to issue this permit. If it's not issued within ten days, it's a misdemeanor. So, we asked for a opinion from our city attorney if this building permit should be issued. Um, the attorney came back with a opinion that stated it should be issued. The attorney came back with an opinion that stated it should be issued. So based on all those facts, the permit was issued. Now, I understand there is a lot of concern over this fence, but we could find nothing in our existing ordinances. I called the DNR. I called the Coast Guard. I called the federal prosecutor, the US attorney, rather. And I couldn't come up with any information that was solid information that said it was illegal. The city attorney did a analysis of it and told us to issue the permit. So the permit was issued. I know I've talked to several of you and... Mr. Malika, right? Mr. Malika, I know I encouraged you to come to the, to the commission meeting. And I told you that I would contact the attorney. And if I told you I would call you before the permit was issued, I don't remember that and I apologize for that oversight. It was, I've had three or four calls on this on the other side from Representative Lowers' office. I had four calls in one day from Representative Lowers' office on the other side of this issue. Interested that the law be followed and that the permit be issued if there's no, nothing prohibiting it. I understand that this is a, an issue for many of you. And if I lived next to it, it would be an issue for me as well. I don't see any way that we could not issue the permit. And that was the advice from our city attorney. So that's why the permit was issued. I completely get.
What about this conflict between the zoning ordinance and the building ordinance?
The city attorney did not find an issue with that.
He noted the, he didn't know about the zoning ordinance?
I don't know if he knew about those specific ordinances. He said he's reviewed the law. If there is something untoward, we can take another look at it.
Well, my concern is that he may have reviewed the fence ordinance, but maybe not the zoning ordinance, which it does stipulate, it is in conflict. One thing I found too was that it says here that property owner is owned to the normal wash zone and that's it in the public, the wash zone is owned by the public. And I know some of that is late, but I know Candace Miller's office did something on it that said even though the rivers are, even though they're all connected, the rivers are included in that. So you might want to talk to her because I think she did some research on that.
I talked to Jim Downey about this, our city attorney, today. And I know that Mr. Downey talked to, sorry, I can't remember your, Mr. McCarthy, correct?
Correct.
I know Jim Downey talked to Mr. McCarthy today about this. And there is two issues. There is the permit application and issuing issue. And then there is the issue whether the fence is supposed to be there. And they are apples and oranges. The way that the law is written, now this is coming to me from our city attorney, is that the application, I'm sorry, the permit must be issued ten days after it is applied for unless there is an ordinance specifically prohibiting it. There is also a second part, our apples and oranges, that if in fact this is unlawful or it is not allowed by some manner, that the homeowner might very well be required to remove that fence. And Mr. McCarthy, you're an attorney. I'm certainly not. Is that accurate?
I mean, there's a whole host of problems here that were not addressed.
Sir.
Again, Justin McCarthy, two zero four one South Parker Street. There's, I've talked to Mr. Downey a week ago. I talked to him again today. He informed me that he was caught off guard. He was out of town. He came back. It's a Monday of this week. And so he had very short time to review it. And I'd like to know, you're saying that there's some requirement to issue a permit within ten days. What citation do you have for that, sir?
I don't have the citation, sir, but I'd have to look it up.
Okay. And I guess that's what my problem is, is that this has been rushed. It should not have been rushed. This is expensive for the homeowner, 2025, to be putting up a fence. I mean, it got kind of ugly over the weekend. We had no direct contact. We're two doors down. But the neighbors on either side were across it verbally with obscene gestures and what have you. And then she started carrying in cedar trees, eight-foot tall ones, and a plant of those side by side, and five-foot ones starting at the river. She must put up eight or 10 of those. And that's a barrier fence. Those, those trees are used as a barrier. And your ordinance prohibits a solid barrier. And I would ask that the, this council direct this homeowner to remove those cedar trees immediately. I would ask this council to direct the city manager to red flag that project and stop it before any additional cost is incurred. There's more in play here than a poorly written fence ordinance. And there are several issues that were raised today. And I think there may be some conflict with Candace Miller's office and Representative Lowers' office on their points of view on what the waterway rights are for citizens to egress to walk along the water. You can't, those poles are, when I came home tonight, are running right to the water's edge. And they have not put up a cyclone fencing on that. This project could be stopped, should be stopped. You're allowing a fence to be built in a flood plain. There are issues on what you can put in a flood plain. There are requirements that should be inspected. I mean, Mr. Downey needs more than a morning to review the various issues here. He needs to review what the federal and state issues are. Your attorney needs to be given time to do that. And I would suggest to you that issuing that permit was a serious mistake and costly for everyone involved. And it's not too late to stop it. Pause. Research it. The state issues, the federal issues, the flood plain issues. There's various federal departments that should be, you know, consulted. And I'd like to know where this, this ten-day permit citation is. And I would like to know if Mr. Downey had an opportunity. One of the letters written by my neighbors outlined in detail the conflict between the zoning ordinance and the flood, or the fence ordinance. When you have a conflict in your ordinances, you just don't issue a permit. The response is to deny the permit and suggest that they can reapply once all the issues are studied by the city. That's just common sense. I don't know if there's any other questions you have.
I don't, sir. I'm certainly at a loss debating the lawyer over the law stuff. This is much better handled by Mr. Downey.
Exactly. And Mr. Downey was not given adequate time to represent his responsibilities to you, to us. And as, and the further we go down this road, the more costly it becomes. Because the, the reason why you, you have a planning commission and the zoning board of appeals and a zoning ordinance is to have an orderly construction of things in your community, to avoid litigation. Because right now you've got these fence posts up and she's about to put up the cyclone fence onto those posts. But imagine when they, when they set it. There's going to be a lawsuit here. Whether we sue the city and her, or whether she sues you for stopping her project. But, and a lot of this could have been avoided, a lot of this cost would have been avoided if you had simply turned down the permit and had your attorney do a thorough job of the conflicting areas of the law.
Mr. McCarthy, I've just reread the attorney's opinion letter that he sent to us. And nowhere in there did he say that he did not feel like he had adequate time to make an opinion. And his opinion to us was to, that we had no way to stop it, so. I think that would, what he said to you in a personal phone conversation isn't revealed to us in this opinion.
But I'm wondering if he didn't know about the zoning though.
Did he address the zoning ordinance?
You know, and here he's pretty much strictly talking about the fence.
The fencing ordinance. And see, that's the problem. If you ask, if you ask an attorney to look at a paragraph, to look at a paragraph. If you have to look at the entire picture, to look at the entire picture. When you got an hour and you're on a Monday, which is motion day in my, in Palm County and St. Clair County, that man's hustling. And he doesn't have a chance to review your entire zoning ordinance, I guarantee you, on a Monday morning.
In your conversations with the city attorney, did he indicate any problems with making this recommendation?
He intimated nothing like that to me. He gave the opinion and said, issue the permit, so.
But did he ask you questions of, did he address the issue of the zoning ordinance?
Sir, that would have been between him and the building inspector. I know he also spoke with the building inspector. And most likely would have asked him or got that information from the building inspector. I don't know what conversations they had, other than I know they had conversations.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I spoke with the city attorney directly yesterday over the phone. I had several questions in regards to the letters that the folks had wrote in on very specifically. And not intending to speak, of course, on the city attorney's behalf, but he felt that he had plenty of time to deal with it. And he felt, I asked him specifically step by step through the ordinances that were all listed in all those letters. And he said he felt that there was no conflict. I also asked him about the waterway issue, about specifically the Great Lakes. And he said, yeah, there was never any real clarification about connectors. And he said if there was never a clarification, then it's based on their face value. So I asked him many of those questions directly. And to me, he had indicated, and what I took away from our conversation, that he was very comfortable in the decision he had. But he said it's also very refined. He echoed what we have heard from our acting city manager that there was a time limit on that permit and that it's really two separate issues. Is that the permit is a permit issue. And his recommendation was to approve that, you know. And certainly if we went back, I would agree that maybe we need to be looking at our ordinances just to update those as you all have indicated. But he said that that is two separate issues. He said the issue in play was a permit issue. And that, you know, he indicated it is a misdemeanor to not approve that. And that he had spoken directly with Mr. Bailey at length about the issue and with Mr. Tillery. And he felt comfortable. That's what I took from our conversation over the phone yesterday.
May I ask a question in reference to your conversation? Did he say it was a misdemeanor violation to not render a decision or not issue a permit?
I don't recall the exact language, so I don't want to get, I don't want to get into that. I'm not speaking for him. That's not a position I'm in. We were talking in general terms. So I couldn't make that discrepancy between the two. That wouldn't be fair to myself or to him either. I don't have a transcript of the conversation in front of me.
But I mean, my point is that there's a distinction. Because you can require someone to make a decision, yes or no, within ten days. I don't believe there's any misdemeanor that requires you to issue a permit, but rather to make a decision so that the, your legal remedies can come into play.
I'm sorry, then I misunderstood you. His conversation to me was issuing of the permit, not a decision. It was issuing of the permit because that was the issue at play, not decision. It was the physical issuing of the permit that triggers that start and stop of that clock.
There's nuances of the law, sir, in the language that, of course, you are much better able to...
And that's what I'd like to look at.
Pick out than us. And I, one thing I would like everybody in the audience to know and you to know, sir, that this wasn't a decision that your city government made lightly, nor was it one that was made haphazardly. I mean, for a week, we did due diligence. We, I called everybody I knew that I could think of to call to give me information about this case. I sent emails to every city commissioner trying to keep them in the loop and up to speed because I knew it was an issue. And this is something that we worked diligently trying to come to a conclusion on. And we, we could find nothing that would allow us to not issue that permit.
But see, you understand that the people here in this room are dismayed because they believe that they were encouraged by yourself to come to this board to address this issue for some relief. And so we were, we listened to you. We understood that was our remedy. There were other remedies that frankly, we did not pursue, which would have been to seek an injunction. And because we relied on what you had told us, that was never contemplated. And I can't imagine an ordinance that would say you are required to issue a permit within ten days. I believe that whatever you're referring to would say you need to make a decision within ten days to give a property owner a legal remedy to, to either sue you or file an appeal or take other actions.
Can we get some clarification on the timing of each of these things that supposedly took place? Just a further level, set the group here. The first I found out about this was when I got my pack in on Tuesday. That's the first that I've heard of this issue, right? At what date was the permit submitted to the city?
About a week and a half, about nine days before it was issued on Wednesday, I believe. It was...
I mean, every document that comes in gets date stamped, right? So there's an exact date on that permit.
Absolutely.
Alright. And that supposedly starts the clock ticking for the ten days.
Yes, and...
And during that time, did these residents contact you?
The residents contacted Mr. Bailey first, and I believe...
Or were you first contacted after the ten-day period and it was issued?
No, I was contacted about day five or six. I'd have to look at the exact date.
Before the permit was issued?
Before the permit was issued. And Mr. Bailey had already been in several conversations with the city attorney at that point. And then the city attorney contacted me and we spoke about it.
Did you indeed during that time assure some of these residents that nothing would happen until it came to us?
I did not. I told them, I encouraged them to come to the meeting.
That accusation was made tonight.
Yeah, I told each one that called me, I encouraged them to come to the meeting and speak their mind to the city council. But no assurance was ever made that there would not be any action until the board decided because that was never an issue. That was never a, a truism that the permit would not be issued until the board made a decision. What I did say is I encouraged everybody to come to the board and talk to the board about their concerns.
But I mean, that's after the fact, though. Now it's too late. I mean...
Commissioner Malika?
Yes. I want to confront Mr. McCarthy. This afternoon, I had opportunity, I talked to a real estate and she's great friends with Mr. Hillman. And I had permission to go on his property. And I did take some photos of the fence. And I'll be honest with you, I was kind of a little bit surprised because I was understanding that it was on our decision tonight to go forward. And already, I got pictures of the cyclone fence is already going up. And maybe I don't understand the proper term, the ripper...
Perian rights.
Perian rights. I was led to understood that no fence could go beyond any structure. Now, if you have a deck on your house, then the fence line could go up to that, the end of the, the property owner. And it has to be a cyclone fence because you got to be able to see through it, understanding of that. But maybe I'm misinterpreting that, that right, if I'm not mistaken? Because if that is the right, that no fence should go beyond your structure, then that's totally in violation. And I'm sorry, the permit should have been on hold.
That's, that's the only logic. I mean, either to place it on hold or to deny it and start the appellate process, the property owner, I mean, that's, that's... When there is a conflict, and several of you have looked at it in your zoning ordinance and your fence ordinance, when there's a conflict, you just don't, here you go and give them a permit. That's just, that's ridiculous. And when you have these, and perhaps our acting city manager is not the best person to be trying to talk to regulatory offices of the DNR or the federal government or the state government. You know, that's what you have an attorney for. And, you know, better to pause and get it right than incur all the expense that either side is likely to commit to.
Commissioner Simpson?
There's two points I wanted to make. It's my understanding too, just out of fairness, a point that hasn't been brought up is that the property owner did, at their own expense, and going beyond what is required, also did a survey prior to this and as part of an additional research for our, our building official. Also did a survey prior to this, and as part of additional research for our building official. And that survey was used as markers and indicated the proper position of the fence. So we'll give credit where that's due, that there was some additional due process that that individual put into this. There's also.
Interesting. The reason they got a survey is because I talked to Brian Bailey, and I requested his survey before they issued a permit. He was gonna give it without survey. They had no idea what the property lines are.
And I'm.
There's other problems. They got fences on my property, and they think that's theirs.
My other point being was that there's, I believe that there's still some due process and remedy available to concern property owners that, through our zoning board of appeals as well. If it is truly an issue there, that would be a proper chance to look through there. I don't know 100%, but zoning, you know, that's what our zoning board of appeals is there for as well. That would be a proper process to look into as well.
Well, that's if someone's out in violation of city code.
And that's one of the things that's being alleged with the zoning ordinance. So, you know, as we look at it, that's one thing that we should be looking at, is my recommendation.
Commissioner Avery, you've been very patient.
I believe we should find a way to at least stop further construction on the fence until we have time to research this properly. It is going to cost a liability for us, and this will probably minimize the liability that we, as a city, took in not researching.
You can put a stop work order on a project that's in violation, and it's clear that we don't have an understanding whether this is in full compliance with our zoning or our.
Excuse me, I may be able to give you some evidence. My name's Dennis Mack, my wife and I married, live at 2009 South Parker, next to the subject property. There is an existing fence that runs approximately from the road to the house. It starts on the 2025 property, ends at the garage, and intermittently crosses over onto our property, as marked by the survey stake done last week. And the current, the new fence is tied in to the old fence, and if that's true, there's a chance that it is impinging on our property. So you can stop it instantly.
I took a look, I went down and I took a look from their house.
Would you, you know, let's observe Robert rules a little bit. When someone has the floor, please don't speak over them. Thank you.
They're right with the bushes, she's got bushes down, that they're all in line, that is gonna block the view, and she does have the 10 footers, which are, you know, so all those things have to be in consideration. And he's right about the property line with the fence issue not being in the proper place.
Sir, would you like to make a comment now, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just, I'd just like to... Sorry. Try not to get emotional.
Again, my name's Dewayne Mullaka, 2035 South Parker. Again, I just wanted to, I guess, further express my concern with the fence issue and the fence ordinance, along with the fact that, like Mr. Mack just indicated, I'm on the south side of this subject residence with the permit. The existing fence, since it's been surveyed, a portion of it is now indicated to be on my property, which they believe is their fence, which, that's a separate issue. I guess I'm gonna probably have to deal with that. But what I would ask is that the city, look at the ordinance, because I believe there's still, it's vague. The ordinance addresses a front yard and a rear yard. It doesn't say what the waterfront yard is. Is it the front or the rear?
And that has come up here multiple times.
I understand, but there's a big difference in the ordinance with what one can do.
Right. But I can tell you, whatever that person's goals are, that either becomes his front yard or his rear yard. It's, it's not clearly defined.
I understand.
Yeah, but what I'm saying.
Today, she's putting up a cyclone fence, let's say four feet high.
Then what she considers.
She might say, that's my backyard. What does the permit say? Is that her front yard or her backyard? There's a big difference. The backyard, you can put up a six-foot solid barrier fence. I mean, is that her motive tomorrow?
Mr. McCarthy, can you jump in? So if, if there is a question that the fence may not be in its proper place, whether it's legal to have the fence or not, is that enough of an issue to stop it at this point?
Sure. Your zoning ordinance would suggest that you can stop it. But it's hooked into fences that are on other property owners' land, is an issue.
I would think that would be enough justification to say.
Normally, you can't connect to a property owner's fence without their permission. So if that's true, you can't do that.
So, I mean, there's a number of issues that really have to be more closely studied, and your comment about depending on whose point of view.
No, not, not point of view, I'm just saying we've had it argued both ways.
And the, and the way to stop that argument?
Right.
This was your zoning ordinance.
Well, what I found is Clay Township has a very good one, because they deal with this all the time. And my suggestion is that we look at their ordinance, and I got a copy of it I can give to you, and it's very clear how they spell all that out, about site issues, those yards, what you can put, the whole bit. And I think we need to look at theirs and try to adopt a similar type of issue, so we don't get into this issue again.
Most of your waterfront properties have spent a number of dollars on professional planners and attorneys adopting these things. In Port Grasham, the lowest houses along the lake, many of them were cottages. As they were torn down, property owners would build their, their house just a little bit closer to the water, blocking other people. So what we had going on there was houses coming down and going further and further toward. And so the remedy to stop having people coming to the community, to the township or the city, or suing, is to have a well plan, plan that addresses those issues, particularly your waterfront property. The waterfront properties are some of your highest tax base in your community. And maintaining your tax base is important to maintaining the services for the entire community.
I don't think anyone would argue with you, sir.
That's not even a question.
Not even a question. I mean, if you know anything about this commission, which you may not, or because a lot of you are new faces here to me, whether you've been watching us on TV or not, that we are doing our best to try to move this city forward, I think. And I understand your concerns, the building aspect, I mean, I built the house 10 years ago, and I know when I did that, at least that ordinance is in place, where I couldn't be any closer to the water's edge than my neighbors. So we do have some of these things in place and enforced. You know, my recommendation at this point, instead of like, to keep kicking this horse, I think there's enough question here that you, that I would say that we should direct our city manager to contact the lawyer first thing in the morning, and bring up some of this stuff, and see if it's appropriate to put a stop work order on that job until this can be properly vetted. I mean.
So moved.
So that's, so I'd move that we direct the city manager to contact the lawyer and address these questions, and see if a stop work order can be put on that project. The motion and support.
Comment?
Any comment?
No.
And that's directed to you.
My, my comment, sir, is that they're gonna be back out there tomorrow morning, putting that cyclone fence up there. And my request is, not that you ask the township's attorney to take another look at it, my request is that you stop it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they don't go any further on the project. Well, I don't want to, I don't want to be responsible for breaking the law, sir. I think you can understand that. And I'm not attorney, and I don't know what our legal rights are. So I wouldn't feel confident doing that without the attorney's opinion. Sir?
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
All I ask the city, in my document there, my question was, you have this new Marine City Code of ordinances, which includes other chapters that include the Marine City zoning ordinance. So I have to ask you, years ago, when we first moved here, there was only a zoning ordinance. There was no Code of Ordinance, which includes all of this other stuff. Now, I could be wrong on that issue, but regardless, the zoning ordinance, both the old one and the new one that's contained in this Code of Ordinance, does not refer to anything with a front yard, as far as fences are concerned. So what takes precedence? Does the city want to control its stuff with a zoning ordinance? Or are we worried about how we construct the fence?
Well, I am not an attorney, and I would think the zoning ordinance would trump the regular ordinances. I mean, that's why you have zoning, so.
Thank you.
And if you want to do something that isn't in the zoning ordinance, then you have to go to the zoning board of appeals. So I would think that would trump it. Commissioner Hendricks?
I think based on the fact that we have enough people where the violations are on different property lines, you could have the building inspector stop it at that respect, because of the fact that she's not on the law.
We'd have to confirm that, though, to be accurate.
Send them out there tomorrow.
I, like I said, I am not confident enough to do that on my own. I think my original motion to instruct our city manager to deal with this thing ASAP is sufficient.
Mr. Bailey even in tomorrow?
No. City officer.
It's enough of a holiday that we're gonna have trouble tomorrow.
Yeah, no, you got it.
Yeah, it should be done.
One question I, I do want to say is, I do not want to make haste and make a bad judgment, and if the fence is gonna come down, why can't they just wait a few more days? I mean, is there, the, the project guy, is he on a?
Well, obviously, if this was a reasonable thing between neighbors, you would think that they would, but this is not what's happening here.
This is done in spite, for whatever reason.
Yeah, this is, this is a conflict between neighbors that, that these, that these people are asking us to get in the middle of, which I am happy to do as long as there's violations. But, you know, we do have a lot of issues here, and there probably will be lawsuits. I'm sure there will over this. Whether we, you know, stop the project, make or take the posts out of the ground, I'm sure at this point, there's gonna be litigation of some type from somebody.
I'm sure there will be.
Right.
But, I mean, the, the most logical thing is to mitigate the damages, and that is by stopping the continuation of the fence. And when it's attached, and you can see that from the stakes from the survey, that the property, that the current fences are on either side of her property owner.
Now, wasn't there a survey of that property taken and turned in?
There was a survey taken and turned in, and the building inspector did not see an issue with any of the existing fences.
Did he go out and actually visit the property?
He did go visit the property.
Okay, here's the problem with that. I know another person that a neighbor put a fence on their property, and it was on their property. And after the billing inspector let them install that fence, and they went to the billing inspector, they were told, well, it's a civil case, now you have to take it to court. My thing here is now, let's not go that far, because it's more costly. If, if they've got the survey stakes in there, and it's showing this fence is in the wrong place already, that's enough to stop the job.
Right. But that would take a trip out to the property in the morning, which is all part of what we.
Maybe we need to make a special case for Mr. Bailey, that we can do this, so that it doesn't get.
It's not necessarily up to Mr. Bailey.
The offices are closed.
It won't happen before Monday.
Well, that's.
The fence most likely could be done by then.
I mean, something could be done tomorrow, if somebody wanted to do it.
Is there any way that?
If I had the power, I'd go do it. I don't. But this board does. I mean, we can still get somebody to stop it. I mean, just because everybody's off for the day, then we, you know, we let it go up, and it's wrong, and then we gotta tell her to take it down. Why not tell her right now that you might as well stop, because you got an issue with your property line, you're putting it on somebody else's property? You don't let it continue.
Well, if it's on somebody else's property, I agree with you. We don't know that at this point.
They got the survey stakes. They're telling you.
Well, I know what they're telling us, but we have to verify that. Commissioner.
Is there any way that we can send someone from the police department to do that tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Well, there you go.
Put a red tag on it, is what I want to do.
Just something, to give us more time, because of the holiday.
The, the policemen can go out there in the morning and absolutely look at it. Whether a policeman's going to know what he's looking at or not, it's not, I can't, I can't guarantee that.
You know, I would just say that we're the city's legislators, and it's our job to uphold the law, not break it. So that's all I'm asking, is that we follow the law in whatever we do.
But, but if she's in violation of that, then the city does have a right to stop her from doing it.
And no one's arguing that. We have.
Motion on the floor would indicate.
My motion is asking the city, the acting city manager, to address that first thing in the morning.
If she's in violation and the fence is up, we have the right to have her take it down.
Absolutely, at her expense.
What we're asking is that we do a stop order, but right now, just a hold until there is an opportunity after the holiday and everything, for people to get back together and decide, but to stop, what you call stop.
If that's a legal option.
If that's a legal option, then I'm all for it. We need to find out if that's a legal option. I know people are telling us we can do that. I know Commissioner Hendricks is telling me we can do, but she is not an attorney. She is in car suspension.
Can you contact attorney in the morning?
Yes.
Right. That's all I'm asking, that whatever this board does, we do it to let her luck.
And all I'm asking is that we make sure that it tries to get done tomorrow, so that...
That is, the motion is to have our acting city manager address it in the morning.
Could I make a request?
I have a motion on the floor.
Our acting city manager is also our police chief.
Sorry, can't hear you.
My understanding is that your acting, our acting city manager is also a police chief.
Right.
That's correct. My request would be for him to go out there tomorrow himself and review that, and ask her, I mean, to.
Well, sir, my motion is directing the city manager to deal with this first thing in the morning. So he, I'm sure that'll involve him getting personally involved in all aspects of this. But we do have a motion on the floor. And then we had, we're about ready to vote, and we're doing this in your favor. We are, we've listened to you, and we're gonna try to do what is right in this situation. So I hope you appreciate that.
I appreciate the patience and the consideration that this commission has shown to myself, my wife, and our neighbors. But I'm seriously worried that, that this is, this is not gonna get done.
Would you want your city commission to do something in violation of the law?
I believe that you already have.
Well, I haven't, we haven't.
Your administrators, the people that you have hired.
Well, they, they believe they have followed the law, because they have asked for an opinion from our city attorney. So I think that they would be held harmless in that, because they've been directed by our city attorney.
They personally are harmless, absolutely, they're held harmless, because they.
So nobody, nobody acted improperly on purpose. You heard the city manager say that he did what he thought was due diligence. We did get an opinion from our city attorney. As a commission, right now, we are asking him to get involved with this ASAP, and attempt to put a stop work order on this job, until we can actually figure out the finer details of the zoning ordinance.
If the intention is for him to pursue a stop work order, that's fine.
That's what.
That's what I would like.
If legally possible, that's what we're directing him to do. So he has to figure out if he can legally go put a stop work order on a job.
Well, just throw that into your motion, I think that's what she's saying.
He made a motion.
I made a motion.
No, he didn't. No, he did, but he.
Can you read back the motion?
I'd like to amend the motion to add to.
Let her read it back first.
You mean the motion to recommend, to direct the city manager to contact the city attorney to address the questions and the legality of putting a stop order if needed.
That's not one.
And that's what I thought I said. Commissioner Avery?
What happens if we cannot reach the city attorney tomorrow?
Well, we'll, our acting city manager will find out some way to figure out what is legal.
I mean.
I'd like to point, I'd like to point out one fact.
Somewhat of holiday.
It doesn't matter at what phase that project is at. If they just started digging posts, or they finished putting the fence up, if it's a violation, it all comes out.
And there's already a problem. She's.
Doesn't matter.
This homeowner's already entered into a contract with, with, with a contractor of some sort. So there's, you know, it's like, there's gonna be issues all the way around on this. So there's already been money, there's already been expense.
That is exactly, Mr. Mayor Proton, how it was explained to me by the attorney, that the permit and application are apples, and that whether this fence remains there or is taken out at whomever's expense is oranges. And those are two different issues.
But if we can mitigate some of those expenses by stopping the work, so we can figure out what the, what, you know, if there's a violation here, if the fence is actually on somebody else's property, or, you know, infringing on somebody else's property, that's what we're asking you to do if this vote goes through.
And, sir, if I, if I could just make another comment. If our police chief were to have a conversation with this homeowner. and explain to her that there's a zoning ordinance and there's a fence ordinance, and they're apples and oranges according to the town, the city attorney, and that while they might issue a permit under the fence ordinance, it may be inappropriate under the zoning ordinance and she could be required to take it down. And if you were to ask her to take a pause, you might not even, I mean, I'd like to have a red tag on it, you know, at first light. But if, if that's not the course, at least perhaps a conversation from a neutral person, such as your police chief. Maybe that slows it down. I'm just trying to mitigate the damages.
That's what we're all trying to do, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mark. Could you let Mr. Hoyer speak? He's probably been here in this area.
I have a feeling, I have a feeling that I know which way this vote's going to go, sir. And I don't really think that it's going to change anything. But, Mr. Hoyer, go ahead.
George Turner. Yep, 6533 South River Road. The whole thing in a nutshell here is that there was a misunderstanding where the people was notified not soon enough, along with the board, to be able to construct a proper decision other than having all the talking that's going on tonight. It's not the city manager's fault. It's somewhere along the line, a pressure was put on to issue the permit. Now, the permit can be stopped because this was not properly discussed. This is the whole thing in a nutshell. And the way you're going at it, Mr. Mayor, is the proper way, having it delayed and then everybody having the next meeting if they come back and is it required to have another discussion.
I don't want to keep repeating ourselves, but in defense of our city administration, they did feel like it was properly discussed.
Right.
But we are hearing some new evidence tonight and, and we are listening and trying to, to do the right thing as a, as a commission.
We weren't all notified soon enough to cover complete ordinance.
No, I mean, most of these letters were dated Monday and today's Thursday. And, and we are, you know, have other lives and jobs and so it's all very short notice for us.
Right.
So if there's any other comments, I'd like to call the question. Are you ready? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, one last thing on this. In the meantime, can we also have a motion that we have the city manager start evaluating this fence ordinance for the next time so that we can?
I would say that would be appropriate work for the planning commission. And that was going to be a motion that I was going to make after this, is that all of those, clearly, we need some work to, to fine tune this. It's clearly an issue for people and it should be something that the planning commission do a thorough review of. And if I could get a, if you could email me a copy of that, I can take it to the planning commission at our next meeting. And I think that would be appropriate. That way, that's our, that's our vehicle by which to adjust these ordinances. That way, the planning commission could spend a good deal of time on that and then get the appropriate recommendation back to us.
Okay.
That is their job.
Yes.
Make a motion.
She did, and I would, I would second it.
What is the motion?
The motion is to re-review this fencing ordinance if it's through the zoning.
Or to provide the direction to the planning board to review it?
To review this, yes.
So motions to give direction to the planning board to review the fence ordinance. Then we have motion support. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so I think we can move on. I hope this all, you know, works out for, I really do. Uh, now we're back to item 10A, which is the introduction of the ordinance from Semco Gas Company.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance. This is, uh, Semco's had a franchise for 30 years. The franchise is, Semco's had an ordinance for 30 years.
The, can we pause for a second? There's a lot of discussion going on. Excuse me, gentlemen.
Sir.
We're trying to conduct business.
In order here?
Thank you.
All right, go ahead. Continue.
Mr. Mayor, Semco's had a franchise in the city for 30 years. The franchisee is changing hands and this is simply a housekeeping ordinance to move from one franchisee to the new franchisee. Mr. Downey has vetted this resolution and he is in favor of it, or supportive of it. He has no issues with it. He has been in contact with their attorney and he gave me the green light.
I mean, it seems like a fairly open document. It gives us the right to, it's not exclusive rights. It gives us the right to terminate, so.
Right.
Commissioner Avery?
Section seven, listed revocation. What are the consequences of this and what liabilities could exist? I don't know, but it just, it's, looks like a placeholder at this point. So what, what does it mean when it gets revoked? Do we have?
Well, that means we revoke their rights to maintain the gas infrastructure and be a gas provider, which means we would be looking for a new provider.
Yes, but what happens in between? What, what's the procedure? It just looks too open to me. That was my question. I don't think there's anything suspicious in it. It's just, there isn't any plan or statement of what happens during a revocation.
That's our problem. They're just having to keep doing that business in the city and we.
Yeah, if we're not satisfied with the service, we have to give them 60 days' notice to let them.
Right, I mean, we would be the ones revoking their, their franchise.
Yes.
So that means we would already have contacted the DTE or consumers and gotten a rate, made arrangements, so.
Okay, I just, just questioned it being vague.
We're not going to leave this job until we have another one secured.
I think they looked at this as, as like actually making the contract more open and accessible.
That's how I interpreted it.
Yeah.
I would move to introduce ordinance number 022015 in relationship to Semco Energy Company.
So a motion support. Any other discussion? I saw a hand going up. Go ahead, Commissioner Lovett.
No, I just thought I heard another support.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Mr. Mayor, also, you'll need to decide an effective date as well. The day would work, but that is left open in the resolution and you guys just need to have it.
But it's an introduction of an ordinance and we introduce it one meeting, adopt it the next meeting. So today is just an introduction.
Today's introduction.
That would be handled at the next meeting.
And I think reading this, the contract's not, not up for a while. Anyway, it's a little early.
Is there a suggestion to make a change to this? Is that what you're saying?
No, just, we need to enter the effective date in the resolution.
It'll be effective the day after it's passed.
It's an addition to this.
It's a blank right now, so it's just.
So do we write in four?
No, that would normally be the day after adoption is our standard procedure. So it doesn't need to be indicated.
Okay, so we didn't even need a motion, basically.
Well, we need a motion to introduce, which is what was.
Which we did.
Well, it says it takes effect on whatever date you put that in after it's approved, right?
Once it's approved, it's the following day.
Okay, so I think that answers it. All right, so we're, introduce. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? So the ordinance has been introduced. Moves on to 11A, which is financial business. We have disbursements, including payroll.
Make a motion to approve disbursements, including payroll, $209,406.32.
Support. A motion to support. Is there any discussion on disbursements? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, without discussion.
Mayor Skatardik?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you, board. Now we move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a meeting with the Maritime Days Festival Committee. Mrs. Blanchard talked about that earlier. That project is moving ahead and everything's going well. Had a meeting with the St. Clair County Community Foundation, the Brownfield Authority, the state EDA, the St. Clair County Commission. And we discussed the new hotel project going into Phase Two. They are ready for Phase Two and the property owner has allowed, signed the paperwork to allow Phase Two to commence. So that's going along as scheduled. We had a meeting with Joyce Parker two Mondays ago discussing the parameters of the new city manager search. I know you guys all got the email that I sent you talking about the email that I had received from her. Joyce and I had a conversation today and what we received was a thumbnail view of the entire project that'll be used as an advertisement in the different publications. And the full art piece is coming early next week and that'll be linked, placed on our website, linked on the other websites. What we received was a small thumbnail view. And I told her there's a couple corrections I wanted to make. And she says it will be up and advertised on Monday or Tuesday of next week. The budget process is on track and on time. Mary Lynn McDonald and myself talked about that earlier today. Everything's set for next week.
Can I ask you a question on?
Budget process?
Yes, sir.
Will the fire authority have an approved budget before our public hearing?
No, they, the, the, the commission has to approve, they're part of the, of the budget for the fire authority to, to proceed. Is that correct?
The fire authority's meeting won't be till the day before our next meeting, okay? But they probably.
If they have an approved their own budget, how can we approve it?
They'll probably approve it that day. I don't think it'll change.
It's backwards to. I don't know how we can approve a budget that hasn't been approved by the authority. Like my.
I guess, to me, that seems like they should be in line with the rest of, you know, our departments and stuff. So I don't, I don't know how that's going to work.
I'll look into that, sir.
Thank you.
I had a meeting with King Kinsley from Tetra Tech regarding our SAW grant, the infrastructure. Ken's going to attend a budget meeting to fill us in on the new requirements for the water and sewer infrastructure that we're looking into. Had a teleconference with Dave Haynes from the St. Clair County EDA regarding 6221 King Road. There is a light industrial use looking for that building, but it's improperly zoned for that right now. And they'll be coming, looking for the board to make that light industrial if they so please, but that is on the horizon. Had a meeting with St. Clair County Prol, talking about some issues in town here. And they're going to be using our building in the south end of the town from now on. I had a meeting with Dan Casey today from the St. Clair County EDA. Dan would very much like the city to join the Economic Development Association. He's going to give me some paperwork on that and I'll bring it to you guys when I get it.
Free membership?
Not free membership. From what I understand, we are in the bracket that is a dollar a citizen. So it's going to be under $5,000 for us for a year's membership in the EDA. And there is benefits that come along with that, including helping them, them helping us fill our vacant industrial complexes, so.
And I think Mr. Klinger asked for something like that, too.
Yes, I've had some conversations with Mr. Klinger. He, he very much wants to help the economic development of Marine City. But he is asking that Marine City put a little skin in the game as well. Specifically, what he wanted was a local person to be an economic development representative in this city. And that's all they did. Not necessarily full time. It could be one, two days a week or two hours a day every day. But that's all they wanted. That's all Mr. Klinger wants them to do. And then he would step up and, with some other businessmen, and perhaps provide micro loans or assist them in starting businesses in some of our vacant industrial complexes. And I'm, I'm going to be talking to Tifa about that next, next meeting. I renegotiated the contract with CTV, Channel Six. And we decided to split it 50-50 our franchise fee, which is much better than we had before. I would, I would ask that the board entertain signing that contract and moving forward with the CTV contract for next budget talk. We'll, we'll handle that at the budget meeting. But Paul Dingman and I have discussed it and we think that's a equitable split and that we are in 100% better position than we were at 50%. That makes sense.
So you'll present that in our next budget.
The budget workshop. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's also a curious thing that came up and that is that they film all the football games, which we apparently pay for. So I think a phone call to the school system would be in order also.
Already done, sir. The superintendent believes that he is paying something towards that. And I said if he could prove that to me, I'd like to see it. And he's looking for the paperwork and documents now that the school board is paying something for Marine City Athletic Events to be broadcast. Because when I spoke with Mr. Dingman, we're paying it.
I was just going to say, Mr. Dingman would know better than anybody.
The district does, the district does pay over $15,000 and gives them a facility, so it's not like they're not. But I, I know Dr. Skelka likes to know exactly what that contract says and I appreciate his diligence.
I, yeah, I've had conversations. He's looking up. He believes he's paying something that, and I guess, it wouldn't surprise me if they were paying something. I guess my question then is, what are they paying for? Are they paying for the building or are they paying for, to broadcast Marine City football? So, so yes, that was an interesting tidbit that came up.
And thank you for looking into that, by the way.
No problem, sir. Had a meeting with the Marine City Dental Office. And they are moving ahead with their rental rehab programs and redoing the apartments above the dental office. They are also adding on a little bit. And we're working with Bruce Johnson with that and the Economic Development and the MEDC to move forward on that project. Everything's set, moving ahead. Also, the work has begun on the Riviera for their facade program, Phase Two of it for the outside of the building. I'm working with Strategic Communications and the Michigan MEDC and Mr. Klinger to list all of our vacant industrial sites on the real estate website and the state website. So when somebody's looking for a business somewhere on the other part of the state or another state, they know we've got some buildings ready. All of the city employees offer our condolences to our former city manager who lost his father earlier this week. Mr. Gaber is in our thoughts and prayers. And all of the Marine City employees are in full support of Autism Awareness Day. The city hall is dressed up in blue and as you can see, all your city employees are dressed up in blue to support autism awareness today. That's all I've got, sir.
Me, too.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yes, sir, that's it.
All right, thank you. So moving on to Commissioner Privilege, who would like to start today? Commissioner Bailey?
I'd like to start. I do want to say, of course, I got to wear my colors. Saturday is the four for Spartans. I'm going to root for them. And I want to say also, we're walking into the holiday season. I want everybody to enjoy themselves and cherish their family and enjoy the community. And have a happy Easter. Thank you.
Yeah, even though it got a little heated up tonight, I want to thank the people that came out, presented their concern about the fencing to us. I hope.
Please, this is Commissioner Privilege and the open party meeting is over. You can't, you know, we are well beyond us. This is just the commissioner's personal thoughts. There's no comments or discussion on those. Sorry. Proceed.
Okay. Anyway, like I was saying, thank you guys for coming out presenting your concerns. I hope we can reach an equitable arrangement on this. And happy Easter to everybody.
Commissioner Lovett?
Now, biddle to what was said before and congratulations, Chris, on, on achieving another level there with the Municipal Clerks Institute. And thank you, you know, Chief Tillery, city acting city manager, Tillery, for all the work that you've done, the marvelous contacts that you have made in the short time that you have had this position. you have had this position and also for communicating so well with us. And a very blessed and happy Easter to everyone.
Going right down the line. Commissioner Hendrick?
Don't forget, next week are the budget meetings, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, six to eight p.m. here at the fire hall. Please come and attend. The only other thing I got is we do have, the new fire truck is in. It's currently gonna be lettering all the sides and that, so they wanna get that done first. The old truck, we were able to sell to a fire department over in Wisconsin. They saw that we had a tanker up for sale and theirs was totaled in an accident. And so we made it to sell it to them. It was ten thousand dollars, sight unseen, that's gonna be used for the radio and that for the new truck. So they came over, like, we set up a meeting real fast, did all the paperwork and they came here within a day to get that truck and drove it all the way home. So they were all happy and we were happy to help out another fire department. So as soon as they get that one all lettered and that, the fire chief, he's out of town right now, but he's gonna set up something so that everybody can take a look at the truck. And that's it.
Commissioner Avery?
I yield my time based on the length of the meeting.
Commissioner Simpson?
I would also like to thank everyone who showed up tonight. We had a lot of back and forth. I appreciate everyone who took the time to show up, speak on their behalf, and also all who took a chance to, wrote a letter and sent it to us. I noticed there was at least one in there from Florida for someone who couldn't be here tonight. I say it a lot, it's difficult to represent people who don't let us know their feelings and what they want us to be looking into. We've asked that many times in regards to the budget workshops. We had a great turnaround in the first one and the consecutive ones have now had pretty much our normal attendance of two or three. So as Commissioner Hendrick said, remind folks that our budget workshops continue next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, six p.m. to eight p.m. So again, thank you all who attended tonight. I appreciate that. I also wanna thank the Blanchards for all their hard work in Maritime Days. I worked quite a bit with, as co-producer of the music festival and their event is much larger and lengthier than ours, so I, I respect all the time that goes into that and, and I just appreciate all their hard work on that. Again, I'd like to offer my condolences to former city manager, John Gaber. And this Monday, this week, we had a chance to attend the St. Clair County Metropolitan Planning Commission's annual workshop. One of the open sessions that they had was, involves the blight management that Port Huron has implemented, has been very successful for them. And we'd indicated in our budget workshops that we want to increase that. They had some nice tips. So one of the nicest things that I took away from that was that instead of offering citation and a chance to deal with, they offer fix-it tickets, they call it. So they cite someone immediately and provide them a ticket. And then if they fixed it within that recommended amount of time or they need an extension, there's a process there, they can then be alleviated of that ticket. So I think that's something that we should perhaps look into as we step up our enforcement. They said it tremendously helped streamline their process and they got over eighty percent compliance to most of the smaller issues, which I think is what we're looking for. So as we move forward in that, I think that's something that we should look into. And just wish everyone a happy Easter. Thank you.
I think that's a great suggestion, fix-it tickets. All right, it's my turn. I had promised that I would speak on the Worldwide Autism Awareness Day, which is today. Tia has asked me a hundred times, but unfortunately, by the time anyone sees this, it'll be over. But the light up the blue, I think Tia would like to see those blue lights out all month, so there's still time for that. And in honor of autism awareness, I looked up a few statistics and it turns out that Michigan has the fifth largest population of autistic people. That one in sixty-eight children are affected and one in forty boys are. Forty percent of people with autism do not speak. So this is a real serious problem and it's, it's, needs all of our attention. And if you do have someone in your family with autism, there is a website, it's AutismAllianceOfMichigan.org, where they put up a new navigator site to help you get in contact with all the different agencies and all the different help that's available out there, so I encourage you to do that. And with that, I have my quote, my closing quote, and this one is from Aristotle. It says, "You will never do anything in this world without courage. It is the greatest quality of the mind next to honor." So now, I guess my question is, do we still need to go into executive session?
Yes.
All right. So we are about to go into executive session. You'll be asked to leave. You're welcome to return after the conclusion of executive session. We may or may not conduct any business and at this time, I'd like a motion to enter into executive session.
Make a motion to move into executive session?
Support.
Does this have to be a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatarki?
I, yes, with the same angst.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Angst, that's right.
So you'd all have to leave at this moment. The doors are gonna be locked. They'll be open after the end of executive session.